All right. It's good afternoon. It's Friday, July 17th. July seems to be zooming by. Summer is going way too fast. And as we all know, we're already seeing some of the COVID precautions that we hoped might not have to be necessary until the fall come down this week already. So it's been a tough week, I think, for all of us. It's really hard to see some of the reopening procedures roll back. And I do think the governor is doing the right thing as we see these cases go up in other places. We see these going up in southwest Pennsylvania, Allegheny County in that area. We have to do these things now in order to prevent a spike as best we can. So while it's really difficult, I do think it's the right thing to do. So all of the things that we've been doing, we need to keep doing. And that includes working for support for our small businesses, our local businesses. As we see restrictions roll back, even on the limited amount that bars and restaurants were able to be open, we continue to have loan and grant programs, loan and grant money available. So if you are a bar, restaurant, and event space somewhere where you don't see a way that you can, there's no way for you to run your business right now, those grants and those loans are open. It's scrantonworks.org. You can go get help there. And then the state, the Pennsylvania state loan program or grant program, rather, is also available. You can go to the Scranton Chamber of Commerce website for that. Their community development financial institution, Metro Action, is the conduit for those state funds. So if you or someone you know is, again, a business owner of any kind, sole proprietor, but you know, really especially as we see these restrictions rolling back already. I think that some of our businesses that maybe didn't think they needed it, but realized that July is when we're taking these precautions, not the fall. You know, it's not flu season. That is the impetus for rolling, paring back some of the opening. It's really just now, unfortunately. So, you know, I don't know if it's Fourth of July. I know that I'm hearing there are a lot more people getting tested for a reason that they need to get tested. There's more cases out there. Fortunately, in my conversations with our local hospitals and infectious disease specialists, the hospitalizations haven't followed yet. So we're not luckily seeing hospitalizations ramp up. But that's why we have to do these things because we don't want to get to a point where the hospitalizations are rising. So I don't know. I know I've had a hard week. I think my family's had a hard week. I'm sure all of your families are having a hard week too. So all the things that we've been talking about, these town halls, you know, they remain true. The mental health crisis lines, I can give you some of those in a little bit. Mental health is really important right now. Physical health is so important. Talking to your family members and your friends is important. You know, talking about your financial health is important. These things are all really important things to talk about, not to keep, not to keep inside. We're all dealing with difficult times. And so don't be afraid to raise your hand and ask for help. So we'll go through, as usual, we'll go through some of those resources for you. The one that always sticks out is 211. You can always call 211 to get some resources. And I think the financial part, I think what we should do, sorry, I talk out loud sometimes on these. I think it'd be a good idea if we maybe brought on a, like a financial advisor or something. That would be helpful. I know this was also tax week, right? So some of us are thinking, you're thinking about money, thinking about your personal and financial health. So maybe we could get an advisor on to think about what it means, what it means to be in this time of uncertainty as households, in the same way that, in the same way that we at the city are tracking our finances and trying to plan for a drop in revenue this year and next. So, you know, whether it's your organization, your business, or your family, we always have to be thinking about our financial health. It's on my mind this week. It's always on my mind for the city, but we'll try to get some resources that way. I think that would be a really valuable, valuable time, maybe next week or the week after for our session. So with that, I'm working with Pennsylvania or with mayors across Pennsylvania. We are working to lobby our federal delegation to make sure that there is direct funding for cities in the next CARES Act bill. The Senate will be coming back next week to discuss that bill. And we really, really need our cities to be directly funded. So myself and mayors from across the state, including Mayor Perdido in Pittsburgh, Mayor Kenny in Philadelphia, we're all fighting to make sure that it's clear to Washington, clear to the Senate, that we need, we need direct funding for our cities. So we're making that case. I appreciate City Council. We signed, we did a joint resolution last week that went to our delegation pleading for this direct funding. So we're doing, we're doing what we can, but we need your help too. So we really need your help out there. If there are, you can call your senators. You can call your congressional delegation. You know, really, I'd say, you know, specifically Senator Toomey hasn't, hasn't made a statement on this yet. Senator Casey is supporting direct funding for cities. So we appreciate Senator Casey on that. I know Congressman Cartwright, the same thing, has been very supportive. So if, you know, use your power as a constituent, if you can make those calls or send those emails to those offices, especially to see how, see where Senator Toomey stands on the issue. That would be terrific. So there's lots, lots, lots going on and ways that you, that you all can help, right? So it's lobbying, lobbying for this direct funding for cities, for our city. It's answering the census. We really need everybody to count. I'm very concerned that our numbers aren't where they should be. So we really need to continue to try to get a full count. I know the Federal Census Bureau is working hard. Our team is ramping up neighborhood engagement on, on the census. But, you know, again, tell your friends and neighbors, please. And very good thing today, I was just downtown and waving. There was a naturalization ceremony at the courthouse. It was in people's cars. It was really, I get emotional every time I am able to witness those ceremonies. So, so all the new citizens, new American citizens out there, congratulations. You worked hard to do this. And we are very excited to have you officially, officially welcome you as American citizen in our city and in Lackawanna County. And thanks to the county judges, I know they stood there for a long time this morning. So that was, that was a neat, neat thing to see. So congratulations to them. Okay, so we can go through some of the reopening guidelines as they stand now since, well, let me make sure. Make sure, let's see, make sure I have the right, the right info. I'm gonna start with, okay, all right, so we got it. So the new, this is the new guidance as of yesterday in Pennsylvania. So bars and restaurants, bar service is prohibited. All service must be at a table or a booth. Bars and restaurants must offer sit-down dine-in meals or serve takeout sales of alcohol. The occupancy is limited to 25% for indoor dining, and that includes staff. So that's your fire code occupancy. It includes, including your staff, which is a very, very low number. And that's why we need to see how we can better help our businesses. I know they can't sustain on these rules. Alcohol can only be served on premise, excuse me, alcohol can only be served for on premise consumption when it's in the same transaction as a meal. So you can't just go have a drink. You have to have food also. Not sure about that one. That one seems a little silly, but it's all right. Social distancing, masking, other safety measures must be in place for workers and patrons. And outdoor dining is permitted as long as it's not bar seating outside. Takeout sales of alcohol for the purposes of off-site consumption are permitted. But that doesn't mean you can just drink on the street. So you can, you can go get that cocktail to go though and go back to, to your backyard and drink it. It's not a fun time in our lives, is it? Teleworking. So unless not possible, all businesses are required to conduct their operations in whole or in part remotely. Where telework is not possible, employees may conduct in-person business operations. So we at the city have been working remotely where possible since March. City Hall is open for, to the public, like we talked about, you can go in 8:00 to 4:30. You can use both entrances, the ADA entrance and Dick's Court, or the front entrance on North Washington Avenue. You can do your treasury business, your lips licensing permitting business on the first floor off to the left. It's very clearly marked. You'll be able to see and follow the arrows to go there. All other appointments, in-person appointments are by appointment only. You can see I'm, you know, working in the nursery today. I've not been going in very much. We've done most of our meetings on Zoom because, you know, at this point, I can do most of what I need to do here. And with these new guidelines, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do right by, right by everyone by keeping everyone else safe and keeping, you know, my family safe. So we're teleworking as much as we can at the city. It's been a real transition, as we all know, and I appreciate all the employees, administrative employees that are going into City Hall on those days that they need to be there. Things like payroll have to be done in person. So thanks to Lindsay and payroll, all the payroll clerks that helped throughout the city. But Lindsay especially gets the brunt of it. So thank you, Lindsay. You know, it's, it's been a challenge for all of us, but I feel like we're adapting well. And I feel it was not good, but when the governor sent those orders down Wednesday, we were already ready at the city because we've already kept our remote work in place. So I think we did a, we've done a good job there. Of course, Public Works Code Enforcement, our police officers, our firefighters, they can't do their jobs remotely. So I continue to be in awe of them and their, their willingness to be out there in the world and the sacrifice for their families. So with that, yeah, so City Hall is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. If you need an appointment, an in-person appointment, that's not a treasury or lips licensing inspections business, please call 348-4100 for the directory of the department you need, or you can always email Scranton311@ScrantonPA.gov. So Weston, oh, that's what I want to talk about. This is more fun stuff. So parks, our parks are open. The plague equipment is open. If you watch WPNP the other night, you would see, I think the reporters, Amanda, was, went to, tried to go to all of our parks in one day. They didn't, they only had four hours, so they didn't make it to all of them. But she was utilizing all the equipment. It was really cool. She was using our parks passport, so that we've had a fun rollout this week with the parks passport. You'll see on Facebook, we've, my, my team is doing a great job on Facebook and Instagram of posting pictures that people are sending in from their parks. I know Council President Gahan had his family at Rockwell Park with their passport the other day. That was cool. So send in your pictures and we'll, we'll get those out. We want this to be something fun in a time that's not so fun. And not so fun is that the city pools do remain closed. That's unfortunately something that we, we've just, we're just gonna have to stick with for the rest of the summer. Although I will say we are looking to open the indoor pool at Weston for classes. Classes, as you can imagine, with the pools, the classes are by nature space for aerobics and things. That's a lot different than having kids, you know, out playing at the pools. And that's, that's what we, we don't feel that we can open those outdoor pools safely. So more to come on the indoor pool if we can get that ramped up. So while you're at the, at the parks, just please make sure that you're social distancing and sanitizing before you, you know, before you get in the play equipment, after you get off the play equipment. Limit crowds and, you know, wear your mask where you can. I understand if you're going back and forth in the basketball court, you're probably not wearing a mask and that. I understand that. But then, but please be careful to and from the game. Be careful while you're socializing with, with friends and try to keep that distance. So that leads me to masks generally. So we have a new, well, it's not a new policy. It's what we've been doing, but we formalized the procedure for mask complaints. I know we've gotten a lot of questions from the 311 email. So you'll be able to see that on our website. And then if you have sent a question in, we'll be sending you an email back with that procedure. Essentially, we get a complaint and we send a letter to that organization, that business. Then on the second complaint, we go out physically, have a health inspector or a police officer go out with a warning. And the third complaint, the officer or health inspector can cite, can cite that, that business owner or organization leader. And the citation is up to $300 per infraction per day. And ultimately, if, if the behavior continues, then the health license can be suspended. So I don't think we're gonna get there with any of our businesses. Are, we haven't had issues, we really haven't had serious issues about this to date. But, you know, we have to, we have to put these procedures in place. So those, those procedures are live on the website now. You can see them. And if you've, if you have or you want to email 311, we can send you back the, the procedure in paper form. So on the COVID, actual COVID front, remember, if you have symptoms, call your primary healthcare provider. That remains the very most important thing to do at first. And they are the ones who can let you, you know, unlock your ability to go get a test. Testing is a real problem. We've been talking about this for months now. We don't have enough tests in the United States. We don't have the, the physical tests. We don't have the, the, the testing of the test, you know. The problem isn't necessarily, right now, I don't know that, at one point it was the swabs. Now I don't think it's a swab problem. I think it's the backup of sending these things to labs, right? The labs don't have the capacity. So we have a huge national problem with testing. We're seeing it in lots of places. I think we're starting to see it here as well. And we will keep you updated as much as we can on what is available. And we will keep advocating for more testing through, through our channels. So call your healthcare provider or call 1-877-PA-HEALTH or the nurse triage line 284-3657. That's Geisinger 248-284-3657. The testing is available at CVS on Davis Street, Rite Aid in Plains. Lake Scranton Urgent Care is doing antibody testing. The CareWorks Urgent Care on West Olive Street is doing testing. The Wright Center is now doing testing there. The Scranton Practice is 501 South Washington Avenue, that, that new facility they have there. Or Mid Valley or Clerk Summit, Geisinger Music, is at 4004 Bernie Ave. The Family Practice Clinic at Scranton Primary Health, that's 425 Alder Street. And Scranton Primary Health at 959 Wyoming. So lots of places to get tested, but call your primary care physician first. And you can also call that 877-PA-HEALTH or the Geisinger line. So contact tracing, also, we are not doing as much as we should. And the state program needs, needs to be ramped up, and we are advocating for that as well. I don't, let's see, there is, there is a civilian coronavirus court to hire and train tracing. I don't know how active this is. I don't know how ramped up it is. We need to find that out. You can, though, go to serv.pa.gov, so S-E-R-V.p-a.gov, S-E-R-V.p-a.gov to sign up. And we are looking for, we will get more information about how active that is. So get the business relief. Remember, please, please, we're still accepting grant and loan applications at Scrantonworks.org. It's a grant program, grant of $2,500 if your business is less than a million dollars in revenue and your business is operating in Scranton. Sole proprietors are eligible. With the loans, your business is eligible up to $3 million in revenue. So please utilize these, these avenues if that's helpful to your business. The grant program, I would hope certainly is. Loans are a little different, but the grants are still there. So please, Scrantonworks.org, Business Relief. Okay, then this week, Council, City Council voted unanimously to introduce an amendment to Scranton's existing fireworks ordinance. It would prohibit the use of consumer-grade fireworks between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM with exceptions for New Year's Eve, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. The legislation also creates a $300 city fine for fireworks violations. So we've had real issues with, with the fireworks this year. This is a statewide, even nationwide problem. I know I saw a big, there was a photo on Twitter of LA on Fourth of July, and it was, it was, I mean, it's insane. Now that I've been mayor, instead of seeing fireworks as fun, I see them as a nuisance, which is unfortunate. But, you know, job, there's job risk, risks of the job, I guess, if you're mayor. Something I, I've always been disturbed by and continue to be very disturbed by is the ATVs in the city. So we all know that this is a huge problem. Council also voted unanimously this week to introduce an ordinance that bars ATV riders from fueling vehicles at city gas stations unless that ATV is transported to the pumps on a trailer or a truck bed. So it really aims to reduce the illegal ATV traffic on city streets. It also bars the gas stations from selling fuel to ATVs who drive up to the station. So those violations are up to $300. As we know, it's really difficult to enforce ATV usage because we, Scranton Police Department is not going to pursue in a police car. We're not going to have pursuits in our streets and make it even more dangerous. So in not making the city more dangerous, the ATVs are still out there. You can always call the non-emergency line with a complaint for that. But this, this ordinance that we introduced and that council is going to be voting on in the next couple of weeks, they, this would at least be a step in the right direction. And I believe Dunmore and Music are, I think Music already passed it and Dunmore's considering it. I think that's right. Either way, I think by the end of, by the end of this legislative term in the summer, Dunmore, Scranton, and Music, so all three jurisdictions would make, it would be illegal to gas, gas up your ATV at a, at a city gas station. So thanks to council for, for considering those ordinances. And I hope they, hope they pass it. I think they will. All right. So also on the legislative agenda was, okay, the Act 47 Exit Plan. So state legislation gives, this, is new state legislation is giving cities an 18-month extension to their exit plans. We can use this time to work with the Scranton School District on transitioning from the business privilege mercantile tax to the payroll prep tax. It is a long road and it's gonna take a lot of work for the school district, even more so than us. There are a lot of issues that the school district has to sort out there. Not, not, not related, it's definitely related to some of the difficulties that the school district has by having a calendar year budget and not a fiscal year budget. So that's all, sorry, that's all very technical. You don't need to know that or care about that. But, but we're looking forward to passage of the Act 47, the updated exit plan that gives us more time to do that in concert with the school district. Okay. So we're really trying to ramp up our engagement with the community. As you guys know, from being on these, on these town halls, on the phone and on Facebook and keeping up with our Instagram and our Twitter, you know, we try to, with the 311 email, with the, the phone calls, we really try to, try to be able, try to have a mechanism for people, whatever medium they want to use to get in touch with us. An additional way to do that now, we have ramped up our neighborhood engagement. We have some interns that are working on neighborhood engagement. And we'll be getting in touch with some of our neighborhood organizations, some of our nonprofits in these, in these neighborhoods to really listen and understand what we can, what we can do, be doing better. Some of the things just this week that, well, these are things I've done. But our interns are gonna be out and about. This week I went to Kaiser Valley to talk with the neighbors there about flooding. We, it's gonna be a long haul there. It's gonna be expensive, but we've got to, we've gotta fix it. We've got to, there's some little fixes that I think can help. And then there's obviously the big infrastructure pieces. But I was out there with our DPW team and looking at that, looking at all the issues that we have and trying to figure out what are the next steps, what are the, what are the funding? What's the funding that we need to ask for? And how do we, how do we work maybe with FEMA, even FEMA and PMA to get some of this, some of the changes funded that we need in the Kaiser Valley? So we also, let's see. Also, I was at Billy Barrett Park earlier. We got a complaint about the tennis court there. And we'll also be looking to see if we can find a grant to fix that tennis court. It's a beautiful park and we need to have it be up and running. So we'll, we'll be looking to see what we can do there and hopefully we can find some, some funding to get that fixed. Okay, something that the neighborhood engagement interns are doing is taking reopening packets and census materials around. So we have these great reopening packets that Geisinger donated. They, they have all sorts of signs for your business or organization. They have a foot, like the six inch, sorry, six, this six-foot distance floor patches in there. So some of the interns are taking those around for businesses and organizations that find those helpful. And then also continuing to get census materials out. As I said, I'm really concerned about the census. Let's see. And then on a good front, our OECD team and our Citizens Advisory Committee was able to announce the, the funding of programs receiving federal block grant funding. They include improvements to sidewalks, city parks, removing blight, funding improvement projects at agencies like the Boys and Girls Club, Catholic Social Services, and United Neighborhood Centers. So thanks to the OECD team for that hard work and the Citizens Advisory Committee. Also, we learned yesterday that we got 1.1 million dollars from the state to replace the Ash Street Bridge. That's thanks to the, the previous administration for working hard to put that in. So we appreciate them. And we'll, we'll use this as a way to hopefully get our infrastructure project processes tightened up so that we can try to get some of these things done more efficiently. Okay, so on to the assistance front. So 211 will get you connected to any sort of assistance you're looking at, rent, food, utilities. Remember, starting June 29th, Pennsylvania has updated their rent and mortgage relief program. So LackawannaCounty.org renters can receive up to $750 a month for up to six months. That goes to, will pay, paid directly to the landlord. If you have a mortgage, you can get relief up to $1,000 a month for six months. It's paid directly to the, the bank. So those eligibility requirements, applications, LackawannaCounty.org for that, that new rent and mortgage assistance, which was great. So a couple of food items, let's see. Don't Have the Friends of the Poor Weekly location yet for next week, but Parker Hill Church, it sounds like it went really well this week. And we'll let you know, we'll post, we'll post that when the next, next one is up. Then the Department of Agriculture, Senior Farmers Market is there, which is great. You can call 5706, excuse me, 963-6707. So again, 5709636707 to learn more about the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. You can also pick up applications at behind City Hall at Dick's Court. So really appreciate all of, all of that. So we've got a lot, we've got a lot of questions today. Let me just get down to our, I just wanna mention our mental health numbers again. Let's see. And any questions that you all have, remember, you know, Scranton 311 or you can call 348-4101 and we can, we can get you, get you any of the information. I won't go through everything today. I just wanted to see, I just want the, maybe if my team can send me, make sure I have the crisis helpline numbers updated. You could just text them to me, just so I don't want to get them wrong, but I'm just, I am worried. I'm just worried that, oh, here we go. Got it. Somehow I magically hit it the right way. So National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 1-800-273-8255. Or you can text TALK, T-A-L-K, to 741741. That's for free anonymous 24/7 crisis support. You can also call the Pennsylvania COVID-19 Support Line at 855-284-2494. There's a Veterans Crisis Line at 1-800-273-TALK. There's the Women's Resource Center, 1-800-257-5765. Or Lackawanna County, 34664, excuse me, 3464671. So again, the Lackawanna County, 3464671 for domestic violence. The other piece, Domestic Violence Hotline, 888-7992-7233. So lots of, lots of mental health options there. Again, don't, please don't be afraid to raise your hand. There's a lot of stress out there. There's a lot of anxiety. People have lost their jobs. With that comes, you know, a lot of stress for people and their families. So please, please raise your hand and get help if you need it. Okay, let's get to questions. All right. So Patricia is asking, who was responsible for cleaning the lookout on East Mountain? So it's our Parks Department. They were out there to clean the area of debris and graffiti yesterday. And they cleaned that area consistently. We would ask people not to litter or spray paint on public property. That's really a bummer when that happens. We are ramping up, not we, the city, but we, as a community, there's a lot of really cool art projects that are starting up. I've been touched with some local artists who are gonna be doing some murals downtown. Next week I'll be at the mural unveiling in West Side. So there's lots of other ways to exercise your frustration. You can come on these town halls and ask your questions. That's a, that's a much more productive thing than just spray painting. So Patricia, we're out there. We appreciate your concern. And if, if we're not getting out there enough, let us know by emailing Scranton 311, please. So let's see. Yeah, Matthew asks, I'm Yeah, Matthew asks, I'm concerned about restaurants, the small ones only being able to run twenty five percent capacity for some. It's not worth opening and they're closing again. And I completely agree. I am. That's why we're so concerned about about this. These, I mean, I again, my husband's a small business owner of a food establishment. I know what the the numbers look like and twenty five percent is not, that's not sustainable for any any food business. So I don't know what we're gonna do. That's the thing. That's why we're trying to push these grants and these loans and trying to to push out the Pennsylvania loans that are available. I'm hoping that maybe the the federal government will have some more programs. Because we can't just, we can't just let every small business owner that owns a restaurant or a bar or an event space fail. That's that seems that that's we just can't let that happen. So I was on the phone with somebody I know in DC last night who's they're working. I know that there's a couple of people in Congress working on probably more than a couple working on something, but you know, who knows what will happen? Who knows what the appetite will be for more direct aid to businesses, but I certainly hope that there's more coming because I I don't know what people are gonna do. I agree. I agree with you, Matthew. I'm really worried about it. So Mrs. Cortez, excuse me, Ms. Cortez, how do we make a complaint about business employees not wearing masks? So call our inspections department at three four eight four one nine three. So three four eight four one nine three or Scranton three one one at Scranton PA.gov. I mentioned that mask policy, mask complaint procedure is now online. And we can send that back to you as well. It's they'll get a letter and we'll visit them twice, twice, and then we'll cite them on that second in person visit. And ultimately, if it's a they could lose their their license if if it goes, you know, it keeps going. But I don't think we're gonna get there. I really don't think we're gonna get there. I think the letter and a visit is gonna be enough, but three four eight four one nine three to make that complaint or Scranton three one one at Scranton PA.gov. Let's see. Okay, so there's a lot of questions today. Okay, Debbie, do landlords and landladies have any help? I was disqualified because I file a Schedule E with my taxes. Don't know how that would matter. I don't know the answer to your question, Debbie. Let's see. I don't know. I don't know why the Schedule E would be an issue. I don't. I just don't know enough about that. If if my team can make a note, we can try to try to get get you a resource that that might be able to answer some questions on that. Yeah, I just don't know the answer to that program. I know I see Patricia's question. How do we apply for rent rebates program? Now, that's where Lackawanna can Lackawanna County can help on the rent rebates. You can call nine six three six seven four oh on rent rebates. So Patricia, that's the answer to the rent rate. The rent rebates question is to call the county at nine six three six seven four oh. We'll try Debbie to get you an answer on the the Schedule E piece. So Corey, all right, Corey's asking, does the indoor twenty five indoor twenty five people indoor mandate apply to houses of worship? So they the houses of worship are not under order from the state, but we strongly encourage pace places of worship to follow those those guidelines if you can. And that the masking is so important. The social distancing is so important. The remote methods are critical. He just really, really, really important. I think we know masks. We don't know a lot about about this virus still, but the masks we know are helping. We can see the data bearing out that the masks are helping decrease the spread. So if you are a place of worship and you can go remote or somehow stagger who, you know, maybe some group comes in one day and then the rest is remote and then that group flips or something where you're not exposing a lot of people to each other and not having them sit together too much. That'd be really, really helpful because it's it's just the indoors versus outdoors. That's another thing that we we seem to know at this point is that indoors is where indoors unmasked is bad, indoors masked, not great, outdoors with mask is is the the best possible way to do these things. And I don't, same with the restaurants. I don't know how we do this in the fall and winter when it's cold. It's really it's not looking like a a super pleasant, you know, year ahead here. So if with your place of worship, any anything you can do to help mitigate would be great. Okay, so Matt asks, what are you doing to lower taxes in Scranton? I left because of taxes and crime. I haven't seen patrols or bike patrols in summer of twenty seven or twenty eighteen. So Matt, I'm sorry that you left. We'd love if you'd come back. We do have bike patrols. We do have patrols out. Absolutely. We have our our full police force working and we are really committed to the bike patrols and the more the community patrolling. Really trying to actually do more of that. So I'm surprised that that you haven't seen that. If you're looking for it, we certainly are out there. And in terms of lowering taxes, we are, well, we already were working to look at the budget and and make some some cuts and adjustments in the twenty twenty budget. And certainly, as we are now developing the twenty twenty one budget, we are trying to find savings everywhere we can. But it, the COVID thing is is a bit of a complicating factor, but in some ways it actually accelerates this. So as you may know, we've made the really difficult decision to to furlough employees and even terminate some employees. We are looking really hard at our healthcare. We overpay for healthcare. I'm very confident saying that publicly. It's pretty atrocious how much we are paying for healthcare. So we are looking hard at trying to bring those costs down in our new budget. You know, we we're doing what we can to supplement any supplement anything that we can with with private dollars. So you know, I talked about these interns. We have interns. The interns are paid by a state program. So we're able to ramp up our neighborhood engagement through that. And it's not a cost to the city. We're trying to get grant funding for things like I talked about Billy Barrett Park. Can we get the tennis court paid by a grant? That's certainly what we'll try to do. We're trying our very, very hardest to get private funding where we can bring costs down where we can and ultimately lower taxes. I can't, I I've never and will never promise to to be able to lower taxes. We certainly are trying. We absolutely are trying. I've said before, I can't believe how high our wage tax is. It's I couldn't believe it when I moved here that my wage tax was almost as high as New York City. So we've got to fix it. It's not something that that we can do overnight. But it's certainly something that we're trying very hard to to work on and it'll take a while. Debbie is asking, what is the status of the West Cranton Splash Park? So this is a tough one. As we know, everything was delayed this spring because of COVID, so construction was delayed. We're working on the project. It's not gonna be ready this year. It's no fun, but we're we're working on it. And we're really, really hoping that that'll be ready next year. We're also working up at at Naog to fix the the pool up there. So that can be up and going in in the spring of twenty twenty one. Okay, should be all better. All right, see, so. Okay, Craig is asking, is there any support other than loans for performing arts venues or groups that have remained closed since March? So Craig, if you, if it's a performing arts venue, take a look at the criteria for the loans on our website, Scrantonworks.org, and also look at the Scranton Area Foundation website and see if there's anything there. If so take a look at Scrantonworks.org, Craig, please, and see if see if our see if our grant could be applied to your to your venue. That would be terrific. We've got the money there. We'd love, we'd love to be able to give you a grant. So so Scrantonworks.org for that. Ms. Shaw asks, what are the steps the city is taking to keep everybody safe? The opening made it a lot worse. So luckily, Ms. Shaw, we haven't seen a huge uptick in cases here in Lackawanna County. But we're seeing a lot of testing and I am worried that right now we're about, we're just at two weeks past fourth of July. I am worried that we're gonna start to see some uptick. So this mass complaint procedure, for example, is something that we're doing by making sure people feel comfortable sending in a complaint, calling us with the complaint saying that they were out of business or an organization where employees or or patrons were not wearing masks. So that's that is one thing. If you need to go to City Hall, it is, it is it is very, very it is, it is very, very tight, tightly tightly restricted at City Hall. And we are pushing all of our businesses to to reopen safely and make sure that that happens. So the mass complaint is is really important. Our police and our inspectors have visited some businesses and some organizations where we've gotten complaints. We're also in, I'm in constant touch with with the hospitals are again, are some of our local infectious disease specialists, the schools, universities, school district, the Catholic, the private schools. We're in touch with nursing homes. We're still in touch with all of these entities to understand what they need, make sure that they have the resources and the PPE that they need. So we continue to be in touch with everybody. We're trying on through all of our mechanisms to to get information out. I think that the the newspapers doing a really good job, WNEP, WBR, Fox, they're they're doing good jobs of trying to continue to get information to the public to watch out for symptoms and stay safe. I think you're starting to see some of these companies get on board too. You know, we just saw Walmart, for example, and I think CBS and Walgreens followed. And I think Target that nationwide you have to wear masks. So you know, Ms. Shaw, I think I think people are starting to get it more now, which is good. If you have any specific, anything else specific, you can type it in here or shoot us an email. If you're worried about a particular, something particular, you have a suggestion for what we could be doing better. Okay, so let me pop back up to an answer for you, Debbie, about Schedule E. So this is a excellent answer. So thanks to my team. So it looks like in order to qualify for the assistance, Debbie, renters and homeowners must be able to show that they experienced at least a thirty percent reduction in annual income or employment since March one. In addition, household income cannot exceed a hundred percent of the area median income in Lackawanna County, adjusted for household size. So if this might may or may not answer your question, let's get you this, I may send you this email or get read out this email to you. That could be it. Maybe maybe it's something to do with one of those, your income or that thirty percent reduction in income. Maybe you don't, maybe you haven't hit that. I'm not sure. But it'd be best to email rent and mortgage relief at Lackawanna County dot org. So rent and spelled out A and D, rent and mortgage relief at Lackawanna County dot org. So you can get in touch with them. And maybe they can answer your question. I'd also get in touch with your, if you have an accountant that you use, I would see if they can help you sort that out. Okay. Let's see. Sharon's asking, how do you appeal taxes with everything closed? So Sharon, the offices, tax offices in in the county and ours, that everything's up and running. So you you can, you can you can get in touch with with the taxing bodies. So even though things aren't as as normal, all of these offices are still open. You can get in touch with these offices. If your if your question is about your taxes for the city, the Scranton, the single tax office is is open. They're they're absolutely open and up and running. I don't have the single tax office off the top of my head, but I have a feeling that somebody will put it in there for me in a few minutes. So those offices are absolutely up and running. Okay, let's get back a few more. Anne is asking, is there a mental health line for children? Yes, the CDC website outlines mental health resources for children. So the same phone numbers apply, the ones that I I mentioned. You can go to cdc.gov slash coronavirus slash we're gonna have to put this one in the Facebook chain here. Yeah, so it's it's a daily life coping for parents line. And it says that the website outlines mental health resources for children. So we'll get those up in a post and today so that you can see those. But the the answer is absolutely. And it's a really good question because I know we've got a lot of anxious kids out there. We had anxious kids in our society already, and this is not helping. So. Okay. Tom, okay, Tom says, the six hundred block of Donnelly Court is a mess between garbage and no license plate on one car and another expired. I talked to the Lips Department. It's been almost two weeks and nothing has been done. Okay, so Tom, I'll follow up with that. I will say that we get a lot of, it's a big city, with a lot of of folks like yourself, which I really appreciate you calling and not complaint. But let me let me write a note now to to the Director of Lips so we can make sure to to address that. So six hundred block Donnelly. Okay. Oops. Auto correct is not your friend when you're trying to put in street names in our city. Okay. Great. Okay, so follow up on that for you, Tom. Lips Department is working hard. We're and we're not quite yet. We're not ready. Next week we'll be rolling out a really exciting program for the rest of the summer that I just cannot wait for. It's gonna be, it's gonna be really good for our neighborhoods. Really trying to make it, make it, make it increase the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I know I get so excited just driving around town and seeing most people keep up their their yards so well and take so much pride in their city and their neighborhood and their home. But some people need help. So we're gonna, we have a program that we're gonna be rolling out to help some of the folks that that maybe can't mow their lawns themselves theirselves. Or maybe, you know, if you have a large item that of furniture that you need help getting out into into the into our PAC masters, we're gonna be able to facilitate that. So we'll be talking more about that next week and trying to make sure. And we really appreciate, Tom, people like you who flag things like this for us so that we can help you take care of it. All right, Sharon, like magic, my team is a magical, magical group. Single tax office, you can go physically to the one, two, three, Wyoming, the Globe Store. I would, I would really call first, though, just for your own protection. No need to get out if you don't need to, nine six three six seven five six. So single tax office with your tax appeal question for Sharon, nine six three six seven five six. Okay. Oh, Corey, this is nice. Can the city design or contract a company to design face masks with the heart of Scranton logo or Electric City logo? I'm sure people would buy them. I, that's a great idea. Somebody said the other day to me, they said, why, why aren't you wearing a branded mask? And I said, well, I'm not gonna spend any taxpayer money on anything like this. So so the answer, Corey, is that that will, we'd have to find some money for that from a private source. I know, you know, I we have this, these neighborhood engagement insurance and we're gonna get them shirts. We're using the money that I'm donating back from my salary to pay for those. So the answer, in part, the answer to what are you doing to say to, you know, decrease taxes eventually? It's not, it's, you know, buying t-shirts with my salary is not, it's not gonna help us lower taxes, but every bit counts, right? We're trying, we're trying we're trying to save on the big things like healthcare. We're trying to save on the little things and and find private dollars for things. So Corey, I appreciate that. I would love to have a mask with the heart of Scranton logo myself. If you know anybody who wants to fund those for us, that'd be great. Or we can, we can try to find something like that. So great idea. And I appreciate that. Instead of ending on that more high note, Justin, let's talk taxes. So Justin, taxes increasing again. So, okay, I talked with School Board President Katie Gilmarten last night. We have a shared frustration on this because you know, I was on the board and we dealt with this and the issue continues. So the the sixteen percent taxes, the the story about sixteen percent tax increase, that is not a sixteen percent tax increase for your school taxes. It is the school district asking the state to potentially raise taxes up to sixteen percent. It's not, it, I, I'm not gonna speak for the school district, school board. I don't know. I imagine they don't want to. I know they don't want to raise your taxes up sixteen, but every summer per Act one, the school district has to ask for up to, they have to to ask to exceed up to a certain percentage. And so they're asking the state to exceed up to six per certain percentage. None of this is in stone. This is gonna be voted on, not, this won't be voted on until December. So the six, I know. So, um, the six, I know that the, the news always wants to make it like your taxes are going up sixteen percent. That is not true. This is something that'll get voted on in December. The sixteen percent is a request for a, a ceiling from the state. So all that said, um, Justin, uh. How do we, ask, Justin asked, how, how do we offset property tax increases in the city? Removing the rental unit fees by the city per, um, permits. Enough is enough with the gouging and ones doing their help to help, best to help make Scranton Electric City again. I agree, um, or make Scranton Electric again. That's a good, that's a good, uh, good line. So removing the rental unit fees by the city permits and reducing the garbage multi-unit charges. Yeah, so Justin, these are all good ideas. I would, you know, really, if you wanna write up, maybe flesh out, uh, your thoughts more in, um, in an email to us, that'd be great. Because, um, we're always looking for, for ideas with our, our rental fees, um, our permitting fees. We're actually taking a wholesale look at all of those things. Because we want, we, my administration, we believe that licensing inspections code enforcement is, it, it's for quality of life. It's for quality of life and quality of life includes reasonable, um. Reasonable permitting fees, reasonable licensing fees, reasonable, uh, ways of doing business. We wanna make it easier to do business in the city of Scranton. Code enforcement is not a revenue driver, like any, I know that some cities or, or some people think like, oh, this is, we're gonna make more money. Like, I'm not out to make money. I'm out to make sure that we are doing the things that help our community, help our neighborhoods look better, help our businesses get up and running, help them can stay running, help them modify if needed. This is all about doing business here and increasing the quality of life. This isn't the revenue driver. So I'm always, I'm always happy to look, um, always happy to look at, uh, ideas that you have out there. And again, on the tax front, school district is not raising your taxes sixteen percent. This is them voting to, uh, ask the state to raise up, up to that in December. Okay. Alright, twelve fifty-eight, we're just under one o'clock. I don't see any more questions there. We are on the tax front, just broadly, we're working really hard to try to get these taxes changed. I don't have a full complement of, of financial experts on my team to do all of this work. We're trying to piece it together with, um, some grant funding, um, to get there. But, um, I wanted to just end by a kind of expectation setting. The city, like we talked about with the garbage, uh, garbage stuff, we have two people opening, opening the garbage bills. It's not a big team on, none of these teams are big. And we're doing everything we can with really, really small team with low, with, um, with a small number of, of people, same with both these tax changes. I'm trying to, to bring in and, and, you know, get people to basically kind of assist us for free, uh, or with grant funding to help us make some of these changes. We don't have, um, you know, we're not the federal government, we don't have a US Treasury Department there with economic experts and tax experts. Although I will say even the Treasury Department has fewer true tax experts, um, in the administration than you might think. You know, government is, is gotta be lean and mean and we're trying to do, do a lot with not very much. But I promise you, we're working really, really hard. We're working really hard every day. Uh, I have a great team that I'm great grateful to for working as hard as they do. And, uh, really appreciate all of you out there who care so much, you care enough to hop on these calls. And, um, I promise that we'll do everything we can to, um, answer your questions, not just answer the questions, but actually do the work to, to get things done and make things better. So, um, stay, uh, stay healthy out there, um, use those, use those resources. It's a really hard time. I know, you know, there's a lot of anxiety and there should be. This is a time that, like, none of us could have ever, um, ever dreamed of. And, um, it's not fun. And do, you know, do, do the things that make you feel good, spend time with your family, um, call those old friends, um, try to, you know, try to stay healthy and, um. Try to get out and exercise when you can, try to, um, you know, do, do whatever it is for you that, that, that helps your mental health. And, um, we'll see you next Friday and, um, yeah, stay safe.